Time to call this meeting to order. I'm going to release this now for this. We call the meeting to order at 6:31. Welcome, everyone, coming via Zoom and also via. We have an in-person guest today. We have a number of people. This was a good day to wait. A bunch of people just came in the room, so I just want to write them down. Jerry, I don't know who Jerry is, but he's here. And Jane, Mary, Jerry. I think that's everybody. Honey Ann. Oh, that's Lori. Okay, anybody else? Don't come in? I see anyone? Okay, let's get back to the meeting. Sorry, everybody. We call the meeting to order at 6:31. Welcome via Zoom. And we also have an in-person guest here today who wants to make a presentation in person, so we're going to try to try to make sure that works. The first item on the agenda, or did I say 7:31? I meant 6:31.
6:31, yeah.
The approval of the minutes, we need to ask to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September 8th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 8th, 2020.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Our next on the agenda is our monthly update from Pratt regarding COVID-19. And I know we have Scott Martinson here, the director of Pratt. I don't see anyone else. So Scott, if you'd like to give us an update, we'll appreciate it.
Sure, Angus. Hello, everyone. Yeah, you guys saw it today. Unfortunately, US passed the 200,000 death threshold. That's always sad. Connecticut deaths have, shall I say, picked up a tiny bit, but you do see some zeros in there. You've gone from zero to two to four to six, back to two to zero. So it's still around. Unfortunately, it's sporadic. It's not as widespread as it was a few months ago. And certainly, we have done a good job protecting our long-term care facilities, which is really huge as we proceed in the fall. So, you know, when you look at the big picture, not so good. But when you do look at Connecticut, we're still pretty darn good, although cases are picking up a bit. It's not to be expected. Certainly, more people are going out. Colleges are in session, schools are in session, so you're going to see more cases for sure. But when you look at infection rates over the last week, Middlesex County is still the best out of any county in the state. So that's spectacular. For whatever reason it is, we'll take it. You know, it just, it is what it is. It's maintained that way. It's a lot of diligence on our communities, a lot of diligence on our part. You know, it's just a different bubble we're in, which is great. We also have the luxury of not having quite the density of other areas, but that said, there are other counties less dense that are experiencing more cases. So good job to Middlesex County for sure. Other than COVID, we're gearing up for our first flu vaccinations scheduled next weekend, Saturday, Sunday at Old Saybrook. That's for our first group of pre-registered individuals. After that, the next two weekends will be at Valley Regional High School. We're doing Saturday and Sunday clinics for the people that pre-registered. Currently, we have about 700 people pre-registered. I have about 200 other people that want shots. We're trying to figure all that out. It's going to be drive-through vaccinations. We're anticipating doing 12 to 15 people an hour. It's going to be quite a, quite an experience. It hasn't been done much in the state, but we feel that it's necessary to do. And obviously, based on the turnout, people do appreciate another option. A lot of people are still timid, scared, don't want to go into a CVS, so certainly our registration numbers reflect that. So that's spectacular. So we anticipate that going well this weekend, and we'll be up at Valley the following weekend. We scheduled pretty much every Deep River person that pre-registered. There's probably about 30 more that need to be signed up, which we're going to do. And so that's really, really excellent. COVID vaccinations, it's kind of what you hear on the news. We hear a little bit more in the sense that primarily local health districts will be the ones to vaccinate our critical care workforce. That would include police, fire, EMS, town leaders, selectmen, sewage treatment plant operators, people like that in Phase 1. Deadline date's still forthcoming, but I'm pretty sure we'll be the ones to do that. So this flu vaccination drive-through model will definitely come in handy when that happens. Schools, you know, back and forth, we've gotten a few cases here and there, haven't had to shut much down. The superintendents in our area specifically are doing a great job. We communicate quite a bit with our partners. So I really think schools are going better than I would have thought. I don't know if we're going to be able to sustain this for the next month or two. We'll kind of see what happens. Places like Colchester had a mini outbreak, so they were kind of forced to shut down an elementary school for two weeks. You start getting into two-week shutdown, three-week shutdowns, then you kind of got to pull back and say, what are we really doing? So more to come on that. Contact tracing, Sherry's not on, but that's, that's going really good. We're able to identify with a lot of contacts contacts, which is the huge key. When cases are low like this, seven, eight a week in the district, it's very reasonable to do. We do fear if we see spikes, when you start to get 30, 50 a week, that can change things. But we'll keep up with the contact tracing to the best of our abilities. And that really is all I got, Angus. Everything else is just kind of Q and A. You know, we talk a lot with the restaurants in Deep River throughout the district. You know, some are doing well. A lot are having a really tough time, as you guys might hear. We do worry with them, for them, for many reasons, as they head into the winter and fall. We're just not sure how the inside dining is going to work out quite yet. I don't anticipate the governor would loosen the regulations, but one never knows. So we'll kind of see what happens. But it's going to be a long winter, but I think if the majority of people do the right things, wear their masks, social distance, I think we could be in pretty good shape. We're not going to be in excellent shape, but we could be in pretty good shape. And I guess that's what we got to shoot for right now. So that's pretty much what I have, Angus.
Great. I really appreciate these reports. I want to let everybody know, you know, you and I speak two or three times a week at a minimum with updates and you're answering questions and things. Your and Sherry's efforts are, are very much appreciated by Deep River. We're, we are in good hands. And this flu shot, I think is going to be a, really a template for the rest of the state, what you guys are doing with the flu shots, I think, once, once it comes time to deal with COVID.
I agree. I agree.
That flu shot is strictly by pre-arrangement. Nobody can just all of a sudden show up.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we're going to have those. Sherry's going to have open office hours Wednesday nights for people to straggle in. Yeah, and it's good we did it because based on my responses, no one likes the 8:30 Sunday morning appointment. So I think if we ever opened up a giant clinic, we would have been in a lot of trouble, probably everyone hitting at one or two times. So at least it was manageable. I'd say about maybe 5% requested changes, which got to be a little bit of a hassle, but it was able to work out, and I think people appreciate it. And in fact, your community was one of the higher percentage rates of people that signed up. So that's a great job to Angus and all you guys for marketing it. So good job.
Great. All right, Scott. You know, if you don't mind, Scott, I'm going to open it up to the floor if anyone has any questions for you.
Please.
Great time.
Is testing, is testing still kind of, the only, the only reason I ask it is I go to Middletown pretty regularly, and I go by the CHC up there. And it used to be that you'd see people walking in, and there'd be three or four or five. One day, I was, the line was around the block. And when I was up there earlier today, there was no one there, and the tester was just kind of sitting there, you know, waiting. And I didn't know what the status, if you knew what the status, if, you know, it just seems like it's not as urgent test-wise, and that might be just that individual place. It's.
Yeah, no, and you're right. I think it's more unfortunately, the federal thing. If you follow the news a little bit, I try not to too much, but I do a little bit. But, you know, the CDC's been really wishy-washy on that, and they are the authoritative figures, specifically within a pandemic, you would think. But they changed their guidance a lot, you know, and they basically, you know, last week said that people that weren't symptomatic shouldn't get tested. Now they reversed that. So when it comes confusing and disorienting from the federal level, it trickles down here. Plus, Connecticut really never set up a statewide good testing strategy. You know, they're still piecemealing that together as we speak. I think the vast majority of the efforts with testing have hidden our inner cities, though. I know in Bridgeport, New Haven, Darien, Waterbury, Meriden now, there's a lot of access, a lot of testing going on. I think for the most part, people in our communities are getting tested because they know someone that had COVID, or they have some mild symptoms, or they were asked to be tested. Your average person in our areas aren't just saying, you know, where can I get a test? I want to just be tested for the sake of be tested. That would be great in a perfect world, but I don't see it happening as they still suffer problems with obtaining the media that's used to read the test. And now that we're into this, there's seven or eight tests. Some are more vetted than others. And some of the tests still take two to five days as opposed to some that take 24 hours. So you really never know what you're going to get till you get to the place and you did your research. But good question. And yes, I would say the testing strategy in my mind is not being geared up by the state at this time.
We're, we're seeing an uptick on testing on some of our job sites, Scott. Especially in the school construction, the Yale, they're testing all the construction workers. Anyone that's going to be on those jobs, they're testing before they even access the projects. And then they're doing the contract tracing. And that's, you know, we're seeing a big uptick in that with, you know, throughout our areas.
Good. And a lot of businesses can take control. You know, we had a restaurant that had to close for a couple of days. Liv's Oyster Bar, it's, it's no surprise. But in the sense, I mean, he came forward to us, required all his employees got tested before he reopened the business. So that's a good way for people to do that. Yeah, if I owned a company and one of my employees had COVID, I would certainly want the people that were even in contact less, more than six feet to get a test, just POMG. And it's right business practices. That's great to hear. Good.
Okay, anybody else? Scott, once again, thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, you guys have a great meeting. Good night.
Good night, Scott. Next item on the agenda, we have Rich Naggett here to talk about the Veterans Green Monument Committee Report. Now, this is going to, I'm going to turn the camera around so that you can speak, you can speak with Rich and ask Jonathan. He's like flying through space, so.
1984 over there with.
But anyway, I'm going to turn this around. Somebody let me know if the camera's not seeing Rich, or if you can't hear him. Let me know. We'll try to change things around a little bit, okay?
Good evening.
There you go.
Perfect.
All right, first of all, the committee has a couple of thank yous they want to send out.
He's going to have to speak up a little bit, Angus.
Can't really hear him.
The committee has a couple of thank yous they want to send out first. One is to the Deep River Garden Club. Three ladies in particular, Roberta Shaka, Sally Carlson-Frowe, and Barbara Lunn. They're keeping the flowers at the flagpole, and the blue sign watered all summer. This has been the hottest and driest summer we've had on record. They were hauling gallons and gallons of water over there three times a week, so we really, really appreciate it. All you got to do is go by the green, see how nice those flowers look when everything else is dead. The second thank you is to the family of Ed McGreely, who passed away recently. And they asked that in lieu of flowers, donations be made to the Deep River Veterans Green Memorial Fund. And he picked up $820, thanks to the McGreely family.
Nice.
I'll also talk more about the McGreely family a little later on. Now, back in March, when I met with you people, Selectmen, we had a proposal to committee of redoing the platform and installing the names of veterans in bricks on the upper level and to put in a bronze plaque there. Now you gentlemen approved the bronze plaque, which I have here.
Nice.
Very nice.
Right? Nice.
And then COVID hit, and everything went backwards. So I've been sitting home for months now, thinking, how the heck, because we're like $5,000 short from the bid that we had to the money that we had in the fund. And then here back about the beginning of August, I came up with an idea that Dwayne actually wrote on, why not do piecemeal? So I got together with the committee, and we decided just to do the upper platform and then use that as a fundraiser. And another thing we decided, we didn't want to put the names in red bricks. We want to put them in granite blocks. Now, I just filled that naming with a magic marker, so it's, I don't know if you can see it real good, but these are, these are real nice granite blocks that are made by Reed Brooks at Flatwood Park. So the names are going to be going in these. Okay? So I met with Sean and Ryan Scott back in August. I also met with Angus, and I mentioned it to you, Dwayne, in the non-related telephone conversation about how we just wanted to do the upper platform. And about a week later, they got back to me and said, it's stupid just to do the upper platform. They want to do the whole platform. We will wait eight, 10 months, a year, so we can raise the money. They said if they come in here and do it twice, it's going to cost the committee more money. So I met with the committee. We approved their suggestion about letting them go ahead and do the whole platform, and in the meantime, we will raise money. One of the things is you're going to be firing off a letter to the Valley Courier looking for funds. And then Rich Forrestall came up with the idea of, oh, there's something like 4,500 bricks in that platform. So what we're going to do, they're going to take the bricks up. We're going to take them over to Fountain Hill Cemetery, and we're going to sell used bricks. Now, if we get 20 cents, 25 cents a piece for used bricks, that's like $1,000. Okay? We're a little bit apprehensive with the COVID, and a lot of people being out of work and, and businesses hurting and stuff. Sean and Ryan are willing to wait a year. I think we can get this done in a year. So what I need is the board of Selectmen to approve this proposal so that I can sign the contract and get it going.
Are you happy, happy with the price, Richie?
He's the only one that responded.
Okay.
Okay?
I was just, I was just looking, you know, to, like I said, we want to get the project done. And yes, I understand mobilization twice. I understand that. But again, but if they're going to hold their price now for eight, 10 months or a year, that's great. That's great.
Price, the new price with the, because of the granite blocks, they're extra. The new price is $18,721. So we're even with $820 donation from the McGreely's family. We're still like $5,000 short.
Could you say their number again, Rich? I missed it.
And the difference being that Reed Brooks for the granite blocks and engravings and stuff is $1,381.
Okay.
Now, are you looking to sell, sell a brick? With, you know, in memory of someone, or just strictly for the veterans?
That is, that is the Deep River Veterans Memorial. We talked about this, selling bricks, the other veterans like myself and, but we're opening up such a can of worms there, and Angus agrees with me, you know. You know, it, it, it would be a zoo. You know, this is residents from Deep River who lived in Deep River at the time of their enlistment. That's the only names that are up there, and that's the way it should be.
Okay, just, just asking a question.
Yep.
Are you sat in on it with the presentation?
Well, actually, go back to McGreely. Ed, I got a call from his daughter Linda yesterday. She's got a box that she found of her father's stuff that's related to the Veterans Green. I have no idea what's in the box. She has no idea what's in the box. I'm going to be getting it tomorrow. So maybe I'll find names in that box that I don't have on my list, because I have 62 names right now, of which 48 are veterans. There's 14 still on active duty. So the price still might go up a little bit. I don't know until I get into the box and I go through it.
So I'm going to turn this around for a second. And I'm not sure if Rich has done yet, but sorry if everybody's getting busy. So what I'm going to suggest, I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with a contract that is, that's not entirely funded. But what I'm going to suggest is we make a motion to approve that contract. So long as that we were able to find funding prior to, prior to the commencement of the
The construction.
Of the project. They'll hold that price for us. We'll, we'll find the funding. Whether that funding is through fundraising, or whether we, we have a line in our, in our, and I think we can talk to Board of Finance a little bit about finding a little bit more money in, in some of our miscellaneous lines. There's a Selectmen's, Selectmen's line that's got a little bit of leeway as to what we can spend. So that's, I'm fine with that. And if you guys want to do that, that's okay. Or if you want to just hold off until the funding, it's fine. But if Scott, Sean, if Sean Scott is willing to hold this price for that long, I'd like to get, you know, lock him in on it.
Did I say something? Project has been going on now for over 10 years. This is like the town hall auditorium. Please, it needs to get, need the evidence. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, Angus, that you sign the contract. Hopefully, we can get the funding one way or another to get this project done.
Okay.
I second that.
All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that it, Richie? All right, you're all set. Thanks. All right. Next item on the agenda is appointments. WPCA is up. We have two vacancies on there. And we have two applicants. I'm not sure if you guys were able to connect with both. But Jim Jake, who is here with us today, and Nick Kornacki, both applied. As far, they're refined as far as party representation goes. So if you guys have any conversation or have any questions.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I'd just say as far as Jim goes, he's a, you know, for those that don't know him, he's a business owner in town. He's, he's getting more interested in town politics. And he's, he's an EMT with the Deep River Ambulance, and I think most important for this WPCA part is that he was, you know, operated the plant out of Chester Village West. Now, that's not obviously a town system, but, you know, I got to believe I'm not an expert, but, you know, a water pollution control device is just scaled up or whatever. So I think having that expertise would be good on the board.
Yep, it's a good, a good compliment to the board, I'm sure. Both of these guys. Nick already serves on economic development commission, has for a couple of years.
Just for the record, Angus, I did not get an opportunity to speak to either gentleman. My normal job called. We're in contract negotiations. That's taken up some of my time.
Yep.
And I'm not going to say that I'm not going to vote against them. I'm not going to say I am going to vote against them. I have my own pet peeves that I like to talk to the gentleman. So I'm going to abstain. It's not a no vote.
Dwayne, we don't, we, I don't want to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we don't have to have this vote today. We can, we can put this off. Put this off for two weeks. We did that last time with the planning and zoning. It's not, it's not a problem.
Well, I'm just, I'm just taking, taking someone to blame, Angus, because, you know, it said my, my normal job called, and we're in tough negotiations right now. So I, you know, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to talk to either gentleman. So I'm taking the blame for myself. So.
Why don't we, you know, kind of set that precedent a couple of weeks ago?
That's fine.
If you haven't spoken with him, then that's fine. Maybe we'll hold off a couple of weeks and put him on the next agenda.
And Jim, I will reach out to you tomorrow, Jim, so we can have a little chat and go from there.
Sounds good. Angus can just give you my cell phone number.
I have it, and he provided it to me on Friday afternoon. I was tied up all weekend and yesterday. So I, you know, I apologize. Like I said, I'm, I'm taking someone to blame.
No problem.
Other, other duties called also.
It's, it's all good.
All right, good. So we'll, we'll table that until the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the CEO and salary line. This is, I'm hopeful that we can come to an agreement now so that we can go to the Board of Finance with a recommendation. As you are aware, CHA has been providing zoning and office services for the last three months or so, maybe more at this point. And I think they've been doing a bang-up job. They're very, very professional. They've also helped us prepare the application for the Most Permanent Steep Grant. And if that comes through, that'll be a $119,000 grant to the town. So that, being said, we also remember that a year ago, when we prepared the budget, we were, we were preparing that budget for one private individual who did not have the experience. And we had agreed upon a contract. She did have lots of experience, but not as a CEO. She wasn't certified yet with CASIO. And we ended up settling with the recommended CASIO recommended salary of around $17,000, $17,500, something like that. We told folks during the preparation of the budget that we would increase this if we came up with people who we needed to increase it for. I've been able to negotiate with CHA to, to come in at a cost of $42,000 a year. Now, that's a big jump from the 17. But, and this was argued during the, during the budget preparations.
Right.
Previous salary prior to, prior to Julie was 35.5. So it really is an $8,500 jump. I have to tell you, it's, it is an increase that is more than we had hoped. But I'm also have to tell you that the services that CHA provides is more than I had thought. The, the, just the grant alone, there's $119,000 to the town that we wouldn't have had if they hadn't been here, or we would have had to pay someone else to go get it. And they're already looking and working on a new connectivity grant. So I think that they're, they're worth it. I'm recommending that we recommend to the Board of Finance that we, that we contract with them throughout, through this fiscal year. And hopefully, begin a long And, uh, and hopefully begin a long relationship with them. They're, they're a good professional organization.
I, I supported a few weeks or a few meetings ago when we, when we talked about it, Angus, uh, the extra cost. And if, like I said, if they can get us one grant, it's going to pay for, it's going to pay for the excess money that it's going to cost us. So I'm, I'm for it, you know, so hopefully we can get the Board of Finance to support it also.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's bang for the buck. And, uh, we're, we're getting, we're getting a lot of bang and, and taking advantage of their expertise as a firm versus the expertise of a individual.
Yep.
And not that an individual is bad, but when you can get a whole firm for, um, for that, it's, uh, it's all about bang for the buck.
And we are, we are not losing any, any real hours that are available. Uh, half an hour, we've lost a half an hour on each day. So Monday and Wednesday, instead of eight-thirty to noon, they're here nine. And they are available online after that. Uh, but I'm, I'm very confident that they're going to do a great job for us. They already have been. So, uh, with that said, uh, I think we, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. I don't remember that we made a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance, so.
I don't recall.
We'd get that recommendation. That'd be great.
I'll make a motion to recommend, go to the Board of Finance to increase the line item for the CEO officer or the CEO position.
Yep.
For the firm.
Thanks.
I, I second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Um, okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion of Hoopole Hill Road.
Excuse me, Angus?
Yep.
What was the, how much was the increase to what?
It, it's going to result in a forty-two thousand dollar, uh, annual fee.
That's the total. Okay.
I believe the increase is eighty, is twenty-five thousand five hundred from the existing budget. Okay, uh, discussion of Hoopole Hill Road. Um, you're all aware that Hoopole Hill subdivision has, um, was approved. They've, they have met the, oh, look at, somebody here. Send them in. Okay. Excuse me for a second. Um, that subdivision was approved, uh, quite a few, a few years ago now, anyway. Um, they have, uh, completed the construction of the road, the fire tank, the, uh, the non-umentation along the road line. All of the mapping has been, and has built, surveys have been put in, submitted to the town. Planning and zoning consultants, their engineers and attorneys have agreed that they have met their obligations. And we're going to recommend to, uh, I'm going to ask you to recommend to the, uh, to go to town meeting to, um, for the town to release, for the town to release the bond, number one, but also to accept the road as a town road. It's, it's, it already was a town road. They, they extended that about four hundred feet. And along the section of the town road that was on their property, they, um, are deeding to the town enough land on the either side of the road to bring the right of way to fifty feet, which is what our zoning, our planning and zoning standards are for a town road at this point. So we need to go to town meeting to accept that as a town road.
The, uh, the final, the final paving will be done?
The, the final paving of the, the, the new section, the town that, that they, that they built, the subdivision built, has been done. Uh, Tilcon is, is, uh, scheduled to come in here the end of this month. So I'm getting, I'm expecting next week to come in and put the final quote on the, 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 the initial eight hundred feet or so. So, um, if you guys are okay with it, uh, I, we need to move that to a town meeting.
Make a motion that we, we move the acceptance of Hoopole Hill Road, uh, to town meeting?
That, yeah, we'll fir- firm that up. It's the acceptance of the, the final four hundred and fifty feet plus the, the land across the, along the sides of the road.
I just have one question and then I'll second it. Angus, uh, will, will we be able to tie that town meeting into the other votes that we have to have?
Yes.
I just, okay.
No.
I, I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Yeah, we're going to try, we're going to do that all, all at one meeting. And let's see, next is Audience of Citizens. Just news from me is, uh, we just finished paving, um, Hemlock, Hemlock Drive Extension and, uh, Hemlock Drive, a portion of that toward, up towards the end. We're working up on Meadowwoods right now, this week. I expect that to be completed this week on a very dangerous corner. And then, uh, then we're going to move over to Lord's Lane and, uh, Anderson Lane and then up to Fox, Fox Run.
I, I have to admit, I'd never been up on, uh, what's the, the name of the road they're working on now? Um, you just mentioned.
Meadowwoods.
Meadowwoods. I gotta, I'm a townie and I don't know that I've ever been on Meadowwoods. And I took a drive up through there and it's beautiful, but the road is, I like the two-by-four type, uh, guard rail that's on one side. And so it's, it's definitely needed and, uh, and, uh,
Yeah.
I'm kind of embarrassed to say I've never been up on that road all my, all my time here in town.
A nice road. It's one of the thirty-five miles of roads that we have. Um, Audience of Citizens, and we've got a lot of folks here.
Angus, this is Jane Samuels, Twenty-Four Elm Street.
Hi, Jane.
That road on Hoopole Hill, which I used to ride on my horse, um, I noticed when I was out there that there wasn't, there didn't seem to be the, anything underneath the pavement. It was just dirt. Doesn't that have to get, don't you have to have something beneath the, the paving?
Yeah.
Like gravel and stuff?
Yeah, there's a subgrade that, that is there. I don't know how you, did you dig underneath the road or I'm not sure how you saw that?
I was just walking there and it just looked like dirt to me.
No, there's a good subgrade. It was, it was reclaimed. Um, and, and, um, especially the section that, uh, the new section that was built, that was inspected every step of the way as it was being built.
Is it, is it wide enough for like FedEx trucks to pass each other?
The, the new section is, um,
No, no, the, the section that's going to be a Deep River Town Road that we were responsible.
It already, Jane, if you remember right, the majority of that road already was a town road. The subdivision that you, that you guys approved was a, um, was added about four hundred more feet to it or four hundred, four hundred and fifty more feet to it. Um, that was all built, uh, to, to town road specifications and as approved. And that's why the, uh, you know, as built has been reviewed by the, uh, town attorneys and the town engineers. And they, they recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission, um,
Yeah, I, I remember when it came in front of planning and zoning. I'm just wondering, um, how, is it wide enough for things like FedEx trucks to pass each other?
Yes.
All right.
Anyone else? All right. Um,
Hold on. Ronnie saying something?
I don't know.
You gotta unmute, Ron.
Ronnie, you gotta unmute yourself.
We saw, we saw your lips moving, Ron.
How's that?
There you go.
There you go.
To elaborate on what Jane said, um, the new part of the road was redone, was, uh, done to specifications. The new part of the road, which was a town road, uh, and always been a town road, uh, served one house on that, on that road.
Correct.
Now there's a possibility of serving twelve houses on there. So was that road checked for, uh, drainage? Now, did they have to do something with drainage? Uh, and was that drainage done extent and widen the road? For five meters and so, and stuff like that?
Those are good questions for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ron. Yes, they, the road passed all of the approval process. The drainage that needed to get done was, was done, which was really nothing. They had to im- improve one culvert that was already going under the road. The road, actually, the interesting part of that, if you looked at that road prior to when it was paved, it had so many leaves and dirt had come up on the sides of it. It looked like a twelve-foot road.
Yeah.
Reality, it was eighteen feet and that's what it is now.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you all for coming tonight. Um, oh, that's the only other thing I want to say. We are going to start, um, I'm, I'm certainly going to call the chairman of all the commissions in the town. Unless you guys, um, express otherwise, but I spoke with Scott, who's looked at the upstairs, you know, from Pratt. He's looked at the upstairs auditorium. We have it set up in a way that, um, reduces the risk of transmission, uh, which is what the state, uh, requires. And I would like to start having in-person, uh, commission meetings. Certainly not requiring that commission members come. We, we will, we will require that, uh, that if the commission determines to have an in-person, in-person meeting, that Zoom capabilities are still available to the public. So the public can come. There's a limited amount of space up there. And while we don't get a lot of folks to come to meetings, um, we have to be able to house them properly. And if they are not able to, if too many people come, we, we need them to be able to access the meetings remotely. So it's going to have to be kind of a, kind of like we did tonight. Um, and, and hopefully we'll get some new technology through that grant so we can make it much more, um, much more accessible.
And it's, it's still limited, correct, to twenty-five people inside per stadium?
No, that, that's not accurate for town meetings.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
Now, town meetings are able to happen so long as you're able to determine with your health department
Okay.
that you have reduced the risk of transmission to a safe level.
Okay.
And that's what we've done. So we can have more than a hundred people outside, um, for the town meeting that we're hoping to have hold up at Flatwood. Um, and we can have more than twenty-five in our, in our auditorium. But that auditorium, when it's set up for the commission to sit around safely and for the public to be in there, is only going to hold about fifty people.
Will we be checking temperatures on check coming in, Angus?
No, we're going to have sign-in sheets for, um, for people to come in. If they come in, just, just number one, to, to accommodate contact tracing, just like we already do. But, you know, masks will be required and they'll have to sign a sheet that says they have not experienced any symptoms in the last three days.
Okay.
Angus, could you, uh, tell us how the town meeting's going to work then?
The town meeting right now is set up, that we're going to set up a, a microphone and speakers, a couple of microphones and speakers out at Flatwood Park. Um, and we will stake out some safe distances for people to, to be able to come. I would suggest people are going to bring their chairs and we will, um, and we will, uh, we'll hold the meeting.
But that's limited, right?
No, there are no limits to size on that.
An outside meeting? You can have over a hundred?
Yep. That's what I just said, Jane. I just explained that a minute ago.
I hope we do before the snow comes.
Uh, we're going to try, yeah, so do I, Ron. We're going to actually, we're going to schedule two. I talked this, talked this over with town attorneys. We're going to schedule two meetings in case it rains or in case there is inclement weather and we can't hold the first one. We will, um, we'll move it to the second one if we are.
On the basketball court where the lights are, I mean, with the, with it getting dark early.
Yep.
Yeah.
It'll be early. It has to be an early meeting. We'll have to be with where there's lights.
All right. Sounds good.
I can't think of any other way to do it safely. Um, I don't know how many folks are going to come. That's, that's really the problem. I know Essex is trying to hold one as well and they're struggling with the same, uh, same concept.
What time is early for those of us working in the day?
That's kind of the problem. I mean, it's getting dark now at seven, so I would suggest that, I mean, in normal times, these town, this town meeting would last about twenty minutes. Um, these are different times now, so, uh, maybe we, we start it at five-thirty. Maybe we hold it, uh, over in the, yeah, I don't know where we have lights in the fields. Maybe we'll hold it up. This is, I just thought we could have it over the football field with lights on, but, uh,
Oh, the, the basketball court project, those.
Basketball court, those lights are pretty, it's pretty well lit, so we're certainly going to go over it with Scott and, and figure out where we can do it and how we can do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That it? Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming.
Make a motion adjourn at seven fifteen.
Thank you, Jim. Have I forgotten that? Dwayne?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll see, uh, see you guys in a little bit.
Yeah.
Yep, see you in fifteen.
Yep.
Let us, uh, let us call the, uh, this is the month of September. Let us call the September two thousand twenty, a Deep River Board of Finance meeting to order. Uh, first item on the agenda would be the, the minutes, uh, from July, Laurie?
July, yep.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from July?
So moved.
So moved. Okay, and a second. Do I have a second? Uh, Laurie?
Can't second my own motion.
Okay.
I know, I was going to say it.
Russ is coming back to life there. We need a second on accepting the minutes.
Russ, are we, since I wrote them? I don't want to do that.
I'm sorry, say again?
I don't want to second the motion since I wrote the minutes.
Oh, I'll, I'll second the motion. I'm sorry. I apologize.
All in favor, please say aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, second item would be, Laurie, what, correspondence?
Audience.
Do we have any?
Audience of citizens.
Okay. Do we both, do both of those simultaneously? Do we have any correspondence?
Um, just, whoops, as I knocked my water.
Do we have any citizens?
Um, we have one, but I'm not sure who register two is.
Okay.
And, I picked it up in today's mail and it was inland wetlands, not inland wetlands. I think it's copy to the selectman. Hold on. Of course, it's still in the back, but I took it off and I can't find the back. Uh, crap. Nope, that's registered. I'm not putting my finger on it, but it was nothing of consequence, fortunately.
Okay, we will take your, uh, your word for that. Uh, good.
By the way, it was nothing of consequence, so.
Okay, excellent. All right, let us, uh, that would then bring us to, um,
Other business.
Okay, I'm sorry. Laurie, were you adding an addendum there?
No, other business is next.
Other, oh, other business, okay.
Yeah, I'm on with the, uh, agenda.
Am I on?
Yes.
Yep, we hear you.
Okay.
Got you now.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have any other business? Do we do other business before we do selectmen? I guess we do. All right.
Yeah, I don't know. I just brought it up.
I think most of the other business that I wish to discuss will, Angus and I have practiced. So, uh, I think we'll do it as, uh, as selectmen recommendations. So Angus, it is your turn.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, we got this backwards on here.
Okay.
It does show, uh, treasurer's report next. I'm sorry. Revises.
And Tommy is not with us because his daughter is being married. I hope there is no interlocking between his attention to his daughter and our, uh, lack of our, uh, lack of our reports. So, all right. Uh, Angus, is it, uh, is it time to move towards selectmen recommendations?
Do I answer?
Okay.
You're, you're muted, Angus.
There we go.
All right.
There you go. He's still muted or he's not coming through, Angus.
Yeah, I can't hear me either.
I don't see him anywhere.
I see him.
I see him.
And Angus is.
But we just can't hear you.
Yeah.
No voice, Angus.
Yeah, it's the most sensitive rate all week, too.
Nope, now you're off again. There we go. Try.
Nope. Nope.
Angus, no. We need you back.
Yeah, it worked at the selectmen's meeting here just a few moments ago.
And he was working a few moments ago.
Yeah.
All right, um.
Um, volume on your, your phone or whatever it is, it's.
I don't know how to do that. It's a microphone thing.
Maybe you should get, and get out again or is it your?
I don't know if I can do that.
Oh, there you are.
There you are.
There you are.
Come on back. You were there.
I was thinking about that, Russ, but I can't, I, I'm the host, so.
You're the host, yeah. You're the host, yeah.
I realize that.
Not sure I could have done that.
We all leave.
All right, so anyway, here we are, good. We started, I got a late start, so let me get right into it. Two weeks ago, the board of selectmen met. We had a good, long discussion. We listened to our town clerk and our town clerk's assistant. And I had a good, long conversation. And the board of selectmen voted to recommend to the board of finance that we increase the hours of the town clerk's assistant to 26 hours a week. I will tell you that we, Amy, I will tell you. Amy's on mute and she wants to speak, she can speak again, reiterate. But I will tell you, we have, Amy has found a marvelous replacement or what we think is going to be a marvelous replacement of Joyce in the office. There's no, not really the best way to say it. There's no replacing Joyce, but she, Mary will fill the role wonderfully. She's got a great resume, lots of good experience in the Westbrook Town Hall, not in the town clerk's office, but in the town hall. And we're very optimistic that we're going to have a great bill there. I also wanted to say, I want to point out, and I should have said this first and foremost, Amy and Joyce and now Mary have been doing yeoman's work in that town clerk's office to get this town prepared to vote in November smoothly. It's unbelievable how much has been thrown on all of the town clerks. And we have a very small town clerk's office with limited hours. And they've been working very difficult hard to ensure that Deep River residents are able to vote remotely if they want to. And the registrars are working to make sure that they can vote in person. So that said, that's the recommendation from the board of selectmen is to increase that to 26 hours.
All right, is it time for the board of finance to take over? Now, there are two issues we keep talking about. The board of selectmen has recommended we increase the town clerk assistant to 26. That does not affect any of the costs that Amy is incurring to deal with the obligations that are imposed upon her by the state for absenteeism. That will continue. And we'll ask Angus if he has an estimate of that as we move through. All right, board of finance, you heard a recommendation from the selectmen. I have recommended to you that we increase it by two hours. Selectmen are going four hours. Does anyone on the board of finance wish to make a recommendation on what we should, how we should adjust or if we should adjust the budget for the town clerk assistant?
I'd make a recommendation. We go along with what Angus has proposed. He's gone through a lot of grief with this one way or the other. And if that's what he's come up with, then he's obviously done this with a lot of thought. So I say we go to 26 hours.
All right, I have a recommendation from the board of finance for 26. Does anyone wish to second that recommendation?
I'll second that.
All right, you'll second that. John wishes to second that, all right? Which means, so we have a second. Does anyone wish to discuss this further?
Well, I have to say, I don't, if we have a new person coming in, I don't know how you can make that determination. I have to say that, but I won't stand in the way of it either.
All right.
What is the financial impact in this? Because I'm not in favor. There are other things that I think we really need to, especially if this is a short term with the elections. Elections are done and over with shortly.
This is not a short term. This is a permanent. This is a permanent. And then, what I sent to you, I laid out by hours. You should assume that every additional hour for Amy would be $1,040. So four hours is $4,160, I believe. That, I did not include social security, so it would be a little bit higher. Little over $4,000 would be the adjustment to the budget for four hours.
Can I ask, does that get that person to full-time status or is that still a part-time position?
Still a part-time position.
Okay.
All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of moving the town clerk assistant to 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Looks like the, how many? I think we used aye.
I think that's a nay.
Nay.
The same spot, so.
That was Bill, John, and Russ.
All right, it appears to have, Laurie, do the count. What do we've got? Four, two...
Well, that's what I wanted. I missed the initial aye. Who said aye?
I did.
One, two, three, John?
I said aye as well, yes.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
All right, it is done.
Okay, well, let's spend some more. Let's go to zoning enforcement officer.
Good.
The board of selectmen a few weeks ago met and discussed this. We reiterated what we discussed two weeks ago today and are recommending that we increase the salary of the zoning enforcement officer's salary line. And Bud will talk about some technicalities there, but I just want to talk to you about numbers. CHA is a firm that has been filling this role for a little bit over three months now. We've been able to negotiate them to a salary of $3,500 a month. That works out to $42,000 a year. There are many different ways to look at this. I'm going to probably go through each of the, at least a couple of those. The last budget that we had, we had negotiated a salary with a new zoning enforcement officer. That was the recommended rate for someone of her experience. And that was, I think, $17,500. I don't have that number right in front of me. I should have done that way.
Seventeen, in the current budget is $17,229.
There you go. It looks like I'm missing pages on my budget, so I'm sorry about that. So that being said, when we were preparing this budget, we had numerous people from the Planning and Zoning Commission come and discuss with us the fact that they did not believe that that was enough. We said to them, or I know I said to them, and I think that you all concurred, that if in fact the time came that we had to hire someone, we would address this when that time came. That time is nigh. And we need to either increase this salary line or find ourselves another zoning enforcement officer, which we are going to struggle to do. Now, another way to look at this is the budget prior to this year, this past budget, had a salary of, I believe, $33,500.
That's correct.
That salary was what I would use, you can use as a benchmark anyway, because that salary had a zoning enforcement officer with lots of experience, lots of capability and all that kind of thing. This $42,000 is an increase of $8,500 over that. Now, I won't ever say that CHA provides better service than Kathy Jackson did. But they provide more service. We just recently submitted a steep application that CHA did all the work on that. We did a little bit of legwork and they did all, they did everything that they had to do to get that submitted. That was for a grant of $119,000. We were able to get that, that more than covers what, any kind of money that we were paying. They are in a situation, and this gets into a little bit of a commentary, the situation that we have with our planning and zoning commission, which is one of the most important planning commissions in our town as far as how this town moves forward, is one that we need to have a zoning enforcement officer not only knows regulations, but knows law and knows, and has ability to put a little bit of control on that commission when it begins to get off track and spending too much time on enforcement, which is not their role. That is the role of the zoning enforcement officer. So I'm strongly recommending, and the board of selectmen have voted to do so, to ask you to increase that salary line to $42,000 a year.
Thoughts from anyone? We need to move, we need to get $42,000 into some line item in our current budget. As Angus pointed out, when we constructed the budget, we thought we had a planning officer, which we budgeted $17,229, which is an increase of, my math is $24,771. But we need to get some line item to 42. So that would be the first thing I want you to think about or we vote on. I would like, and you can tell me whether I'm confusing things, I would like to create a new line item called consulting services so that the world will see that that is what we incurred in this year, a consultant. Leave the salary line, make it zero in case we do replace, get a zoning officer in the future. So it is my goal, I would like to recommend that you consider giving us a new line item and moving whatever is in salary into a consulting line item so that that dollar amount is $42,000. Does anyone wish to continue this conversation? Is anyone supportive, resistant?
I don't have any, excuse me, I don't have any problem with what you're, how you want to do it. Can we afford the $42,000?
Yes. Yes, we can. I think in that, what we're going to find is in the long run, having a good enforcement officer is going to save us money with legal fees, I hope. It's going to save us money by virtue of their grant-writing abilities. They are, not only are they writing grants when we find them for them, but they are actively searching for grants. And while the steep grant is a matching grant, and we're going to have to talk about that when the time comes, it's not going to cost us $119,000 for it. And it's not going to cost us $220,000. It's going to cost us, whatever the match is, I think it's in the vicinity of 70. But there's $119,000 towards a $220,000 project that's, or a $190,000 project that's, that's going to do the town a lot of good. And without that, without that grant application being made, we would not have even had that opportunity. Now, the connectivity grant that they're working on right now is not a matching grant. So that'll be probably another $60,000 that they will have, the town will have benefited from by virtue of doing that. And those are, those are both capital expenditures that will help this town move forward. So I question whether we can afford not to.
I'm questioning, can they do other types of grants such as fire truck, firehouse? Because we desperately need a firehouse.
They can. I would suggest to you, yes. And those are grants that we're going to be looking for. In fact, I was talking with Joyce and Carol today about, and Jonathan today about, we need to get, we need to get on the ball with that AFG grant that's coming due. We need to get that submitted. But can they? Yes. I'm not certain that we want to take away. They are very busy right now, keep getting this, getting our planning and zoning commission on track, back on track after a couple of years of not. So, and there's a lot of activity in town, as you might imagine. As I've been saying, houses, you can't put a house for sale right now that it doesn't sell in a couple of days.
Correct.
There is an awful lot of activity in town. So they're busy. And it might, in order for them to do something like that AFG grant or a fire truck grant, would be additional hours from what they're budgeted for. They certainly can, but there would be a cost to that. And I think we're better off in those type of grants going with people that specialize in those type of grants.
Bill, was that your question? Whether we can afford the grant that this firm helped us get, or hopefully get? Or is it that can we afford the $42,000?
We afford the $42,000.
Yeah, okay. I thought Angus was being aggressive in his answer, but we'll get to that same question later. And I don't know how, I don't know what criteria to use to answer your question. We paid Kathy $33,500. This is what, a little bit more than $8,000 more? I'm leaning towards yes, we can afford it. But I don't know what criteria to use. I think so.
Oh, you know the number better than anybody, really. I mean, it's, you look at them every day.
And we have not had, Angus should take over. We have not had good success attempting to find a zoning enforcement officer.
That's a huge part of it.
That's...
That's obvious.
And this, and I want to make sure that everyone understands, this contract is, we can, either party can leave this contract with 30 days' notice. So if we are able to, and CHA is fully aware that we are looking for a competent, experienced zoning enforcement officer who wants to work part-time. And we will continue to look for that person. This is an active search.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if we find someone that we can reduce this down to...
And such as sharing with another town local.
That's exactly right, yep. And we are working with Chester to work towards that. We're working with Killenworth maybe to work towards that because Kathy's going to retire from there shortly. So CHA is fully aware that this is not a permanent contract, that this particular contract will run through July or through June. It would be an annual contract. But at any time, we can leave it with 30 days' notice.
Okay.
Angus, you're calling them CHA? I thought it was CM something.
It was CME when they first, when they first came here over a year ago, a year and a half ago, they were trying to get in the job. I resisted them at that time because I thought for certain that we would get someone. And we had two good applicants at that time.
Yes.
We had two, let's say, two qualified applicants at that time. They have subsequently been bought by a much larger firm, CHA.
What does that, what do those letters stand for? So I can put it in here.
You got me. I'll look it up and email it to you. I don't know.
All right, folks, we are, here we are. We are, we were discussing. But we need, I believe, or I would ask one of you to recommend that we increase planning and zoning budget so that it reflects a $42,000 payment to a consultant and that we reduce the salary line item to zero. Would anyone support that or make that recommendation?
I'll make the recommendation. This has to go to a town meeting?
Well, that is the next sort of chapter here. Under COVID concepts, we have the authority to do it. However, Angus wishes to take several other things to the town. If he takes this to the town, I would like to see this increase be approved by the town at Angus's town meeting.
Yep. That is, that's my interest as well. If we can, if we can have public involvement, we should have public involvement. And we're going to try our best to do that within the next few weeks.
So the recommendation would be we would move the incremental funding to a town meeting for authority.
So that's $24,000 currently? Over, it was 17 something?
24/7, that's correct.
Yeah, all right. If that's moved to a town, town meeting, I'm supportive of it.
All right, we've got a resolution by Laurie, supported by, seconded by John. Do we have any additional conversation? Any board of finance member would like to ask? All right, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of moving, of changing the board of the zoning budget to increase it for by the 24th/7 so that it reflects the ability to pay the new firm, enter into a contract for $42,000 per year. All those say aye, if I got that across. Please say aye.
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 It was helping out. I don't vote in a tie. Perfect, all those opposed? Yeah, thank you all, good. Does anyone wish to put up resistance to my idea to put it into... Yeah, thank you all. Good. Does anyone wish to put up resistance to my idea to put it into a new line item?
No, I think it's a good idea because it separates it out. It allows us to go back to the zoning enforcement salary line. Or if, when we hire someone who's not going to be a consultant.
That is my thought as well. And when we stand in front of the town, it will say consulting services. So it will appear as exactly what we did this year. So Angus and I will work with the accountants to do that. We talked to the accountant today. They seem to be both supportive of it. So excellent. All right, good. Angus, do you have a sec, a next item on your mental agenda?
I do. I've got a list that's a mile and a half long. Library.
That's encouraging. Good. Go to the library.
Library.
What if you do the simple one, the basement first?
Pardon?
Do the basement first, since that's an easy conversation.
Yeah, so that's a great one. Yeah, thanks. The positive, the positive end there is you remember during the budget process or somewhere, somewhere very shortly afterwards, the library came in with photographs. I think it was the budget process to show how much we're ignoring the building. I, I brought a structural engineer over there who provided his services as a friend to the town. Great firm down in Old Saverick who does a tremendous amount of structural work around the country. They came in and, and examined the basement. While it looks dangerous and it looks bad, it is not, we just need to clean it up and repoint and replace a few bricks. So that's, I've already gotten one bid for about thirty five hundred dollars. So it's not going to be a terrible project to get to undertake. And frankly, it will be a kick in the butt for us to finish what we started five years ago, was cleaning up the junk in that basement and getting it cleaned up and presented. It can be used for more than just a junkyard. So, so that's a positive with the library. Another positive.
Five is in our budget. We have a budget of approximately thirty two thousand dollars.
That's in our town buildings. That's nothing, it's nothing that's going to cost us, you know, we've got that.
Excellent. Good. All right.
The other thing for the library, we can congratulate our children's librarian. She has successfully achieved her master's degree in library science. And as such is, is probably going to move on. She has, she's expressed an interest in staying with the town. And while the library association, librarians association recommends that anyone with her education should be receiving a pay of about twenty seven dollars an hour. She has offered that she would, she would consider staying if we would move her to full-time, offer her health benefits and increase her pay to twenty two dollars an hour. As much as I would love to recommend to you that we do that, and half of me is recommending that we do that, I question whether this town can actually afford to have two full-time librarians. And I would, I would love to say that we can. But my recommendation is that we fold off on that until the budget season, when we're really up to our next in-budget and have a better idea of where we are with that. But I'd like to hear your, your thoughts as well.
What's the risk of losing this librarian between now and budget season?
Oh, I think as soon as we offer a negative response to her request to go full-time, I would be surprised if she doesn't already have feelers out. She wants to stay here. She loves this town. She loves this library. And she's done a tremendous job with our children's program. My question is whether or not she, I don't, I don't want to full-time, I want to pay that money for, for just the children's programming, number one. But I do think that she would be, it would be an excellent, excellent opportunity for us to have a, and I'm glad Susan's not here because this is not intended as a slight at all, but Susan is closer to my age than she is to Elaine's age and may in fact not be with us for an extended period of time. And Elaine could slide right into that role already knowing the building. But that's not, that's not what's happening now. What would happen now is we would have two full-time master, master's degree librarians in the, in the building.
As the daughter of a librarian, a children's librarian for that matter, who always worked part-time for Guilford and in her later years was volunteering up until the year she passed, including running, running the library for four hours a night at nighttime in her seventies as a volunteer on small-town library. I do not, no, I'm not in favor of having that much extra. I don't think we need it. We do need good volunteers. We have a friends of the library, which as far as I can tell is a very active board. And that's something that they should be getting the volunteers out to come in and work the library.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with all of what you said, but I do disagree with part of it.
Okay.
I, I think that, I, I think we have a wonderful library.
No, I do too.
Elaine has, Elaine is, is a wonderful librarian.
Nothing against her.
If I could figure, and I believe me, I'm going to be working towards, towards this if she agrees to wait until, to wait to leave until the budget season is here and gone. But I don't think we should change the budget now for this.
Okay, we're merely a question of, of a slight raise, that would be one thing, but to go to full-time status, you have to a lot of extra money, right, so that goes with full-time status benefits and so forth. And that is, you know, a bridge too far, I think, for Deep River. Given that we seem to always face lots of problems when it comes to budget season. I also love the library and I congratulate the fact that she got a master's degree. I think that's great. But I just don't, our town can handle that. It hurts me to say that, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I, I, I don't, I want to make sure that you understand this is not a demand by Elaine in any way. It's a request by Susan for us to consider. Because she doesn't want to lose her, just like Amy didn't want to lose Joyce. All of those things.
So it's, it's, it's good people. It's always tough to replace good people. That's problematic.
That's correct. Okay, so that's, that's where that is.
Does anyone wish to take any action? My estimate, working with Angus is fifteen thousand dollars incremental salary. And we think she is married and with benefits for both, which will be about twenty five, but it was just her fifteen. So it's at least thirty to fifty, thirty to forty thousand dollars. Does anyone wish to make any recommendation to take action at today? Or do we choose silence? Sounds like silence, silence is winning.
All right. Let us move on Angus to your long list. Move on to, the last on my list, unless, but I've forgotten something, is our beloved Deep River Fire Department. And this may or may not be a longer conversation, but we, we expressed six months ago that we were going to wait and see how our taxes, our taxes came in this right now before we came back and readdressed the question of the fire truck. Our taxes have come in above expectations by any means. We are at almost ninety-nine percent of what we would have collected at this point last year and previous years, previous five years.
Yes.
We have collected. So we are in outstanding shape as far as I'm concerned with taxes that we have collected. And we promised that we would discuss this again. And I, I am asking you guys to take this up. And I think, in my opinion, I think that we are, we're responsible for funding this truck.
Well, I really want the funding of a truck. I really want an update on the town, on the fire department building. Because if they don't have a building that can protect these vehicles, I don't want to be putting a new building, a new truck in there. I want them to get a truck, but only if they have a place that can help, that can make, keep them appropriately. And I'm not talking the Taj Mahal. They don't need anything, you know.
Plans that we have right now, the plans that we have right now is three and a half million. We're going to, hopefully, we're going to move that forward quickly enough so that that will be ready to come to the town at the same time as our annual town meeting.
So we're talking another year before we get anything on the building?
No, we've got, we've got rough numbers, but you know, we've still got a little bit of work to do, but three and a half million is what that's going to be. We're looking at probably, probably, if that moves forward, and I'm not, I'm not optimistic that the town will vote for that. But I'm hopeful that they will. If they don't, then we will have to put a million into the existing building in order to make that so it's not structurally sound. It is structurally sound, but the roof is leaking. It's going to need about a million dollars.
So that meeting is, is only about eight months out.
That's right.
The fund is, I mean, I know you said it's a year and it's close, but a town meeting in eight months or so, and we're going to have the fun of the budget season coming up before you know it.
That's right. And that's why we're trying to move it forward as quickly as we can. But understanding that this is, the timing is such that it will be putting, both things coming together. This was scheduled to have happened two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago at this point. We, and we tried to, tried for that grant. We didn't get the grant. We had it in the budget. We didn't spend it. And we determined that we were going to wait until what happened with taxes this year. That time has come and I'd like, I'd like you to discuss it and.
Good. Can I, can I say something? I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent saying that we need the firehouse. And I think there's two separate things, although the timing is going to be together. My suggestion, as far as the truck goes, would be, and I, and I briefly discussed it with Tim, probably pre-COVID or the beginning of COVID, that maybe the town or the fire department should contract with independent third-party to come in and evaluate what the town of Deep River does or doesn't need. I don't know when the last time that was done. You know, we have piano works, we have the, the, the high schools, the elementary schools, all, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on here. And, and you know, just because the fire department, and I'm, I've said it before, I'm a, I'm a veteran firefighter and I'm a little torn. But just because it's always been this way with wanting trucks, doesn't, I want to, I would like to, personally, I would like to see an independent third-party come in and say, Deep River, you, you've got to replace that truck. Or they could come in and say, you don't need that truck. You know, so that, that changes the financial burden to the taxpayers and the board of finance and all that kind of stuff. So instead of saying agreeing or disagreeing with the fire department or, or whatever, that if we had this independent and there are eight, I understand there, I don't know who they are, but they will come in and evaluate for a fee. And again, I don't know what that costs, but it's a whole, less than a fire truck, to come in and evaluate what the town has and what they should or shouldn't have presently and in the future.
Is there a consideration also with the fact that we have mutual aid that should be taken?
I would think that as part of that assessment, I would think it would have to be, because I've said it numerous times, and we have a big fire. There's no shortage apparatus or firemen that show up from all the area towns. And just because Deep River's had their own great thing and Essex had their own great thing, everybody's had their own great thing. Mutual aid has been around since, and it goes back to some of the, probably Dwayne knows the name Jim Groat. Mutual aid was, was set up way, way back and, and it works great.
Is he still alive?
No, he's not. He passed. And we used, we used to take bets at the annual fire department banquet as to how long his speech would be. There were some, there were some pretty good pots that were, were settled at the end of the meeting. That is, Laurie, that's a very, that's a very big, in my opinion, that's a very big thing, you know, because again, there's, it, you know, it might take an extra three to five minutes for a fire truck to get from Essex when you need it. But the first, the first operate, the first trucks in there are from Deep River.
You know something, I, I just, Jim, I listened to your, your wise counsel and I absolutely agree with what you say. But mutual aid works both ways too. Just because we can have somebody come in from Essex or, or Killenworth or wherever to help us, we are also supposed to be helping our, our sister and brother towns.
Absolutely.
To do that, we should have installed equipment. It will come as no shock to anyone here on the screen tonight that I will speak in favor of getting a truck as I have for the last empty, yucky nine times. And keep putting things off. It just gets worse and worse and worse and worse. I do wish that people loosen up a little bit and, and see if we can't get a truck for the fire department. I would be one hundred percent behind it. I'd also be behind Jim's suggestion of having an independent assessor come in and tell us what, I think that's an excellent idea and see what we do need. But it will not surprise me if they say, guys are going to have to get some new equipment.
Oh, absolutely. I wouldn't be surprised if they said that also. But it's, it's nice to hear from other than the fire department. Or, you know, the, you know, whether it be the selectman of the board of finance, you know, it's, it's an independent assessment would be, I think, would be very crucial or important.
It will be. And we talked about this six months ago with the fire department, board of fire commissioners. They, they, they were supposed to get us some names. I haven't researched, I don't even know what you call that company. And I have not heard from them about that.
It may redirect the type of vehicle we get.
It may, it may not. I've said before, I think it was probably off the record after meetings, I've said to a few of you that we have to, I think that we have to stop questioning the fire department. We, none of us here are actually on the fire department. We don't know what their needs are. And that's one of the reasons why I want to get this assessment done. But time has, time has come for us to talk now about the truck that we are questioning. That study is going to take months to get done anyway. So I would like to, to hear what you say. And I would like, I would like to, we promised, we promised that. That if that grant did not come through, then we would fund this truck.
Yep.
And I, I totally understand the question of what was going to happen in COVID. And that still is a question, is what's going to happen, what's going to happen to our state funding. But I think, I think we need to move this forward.
Jim, are you suggesting that we not move forward with a fire truck until a study was done?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that necessarily. I think the study should be done regardless. I mean, we do. There is no, there is no doubt that we have older fire apparatus in town. And for various regions, long before I was on the board of selectmen, you know, finances and all that kind of stuff, it wasn't done. And I do believe that the old, as every day, those trucks are getting older. And they will, at some point, they, you know, they need to be replaced. And I, I don't have a problem with replacing the truck. But I think we also need to assess what the town needs so that, you know, when the next oldest truck comes up and if, if the report says you only need two pumpers instead of three or whatever it happens to be, well, then that truck isn't replaced at that time. But in the meantime, we have a truck that they just spend some money on to get it back up to a, a more serviceable, a hundred percent serviceable condition. And, and that's, you know, they should do that anyway because you got a piece of apparatus, you should keep it in service. But I think, I think in a way, they were kind of hoping for a new truck so they wouldn't have to. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying don't get the truck. I'm saying that we need to find out what, what the town needs, but we do have an aging fire truck fleet that at least one of them needs to be replaced. So.
I, I get, good. And that would be my, I have no problem with a, a study. I just, I get a little concerned offering to the fire department, one more, wait, wait. Again, I think.
They've been promised for so long.
I think the town promised them and I'd like to move forward. We seem to have indications that our, our taxes are coming in as strong as we can expect. My estimate in July was that we would generate about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus out of last year, conservatively four hundred. We've got a surplus, I estimate about one point six million. It's an aggressive number that we would be adding, but I guess I would like to consider moving forward. We have said there were certain indicators we're looking for and revenue seemed to be coming in strong. Is, is any? is anyone think that we should move forward or continue to watch? Many thoughts on action plans?
If you're looking for a motion to move forward, I'll make the motion.
Um, well, we could do that. Now, Laurie just suggested that she is, and I don't mean to quote you, Laurie, or you've explained this to me a couple of times, and I have nodded, I nodded because I understood what you're talking about, attempting to marry the new truck with a new firehouse. I'm not sure I was in agreement, but I certainly understood the, the relationship. Are you putting the two of them together that you would not move forward on a truck immediately?
I, I would move forward with a truck, I'd like to see funding developed so that it could be expanded to include the, um, a building.
Yeah, and that is what.
So that we have one payment, which would be a lesser payment as opposed to two payments of a huge amount. Um, is that a possibility, do you think?
Certainly, we have, we have talked about putting the fire truck on a thirty year borrowings if we were to finance the, the station, the new station, that's correct.
Don't you take the chance that if the town doesn't wanna do the building, then the fire truck would go away if it was tied?
No, here's, here's what I, here's what I suggested last year on that, and then, and I, I do think that it still can be done, buy the fire truck now. As, when we fund the firehouse, we incorporate that fee into the firehouse. So if we buy the fire truck on a five year plan, which I don't necessarily agree is the best way to do it, but if we buy that on a five year plan, and then we move forward with the firehouse, we incorporate that, we absorb that into it, and it saves us a considerable amount of money. And, and what I like about it is we make that payment for the life of that truck. So, we are paying now for a truck that, we pay that truck up in five years, the town continues to benefit from that truck for another twenty-five years.
At least, yes.
If we, yeah, in Deep River, maybe thirty-five years.
Well, it is gonna be forty-five years.
And as if we keep going this way. But if we, if we, if we fund this firehouse with, um, with USDA money, that'll be a forty year loan. And that loan, we can absorb this into that, and that will be a loan that is just about the length of the use of that truck. And, uh, and I think that that works out wonderfully as far as reducing the payments.
Um, I'm, I'm going to suggest that the conversation, these are conversations we've had before. Uh, Russell, Laurie and I sort of seen, lean in the positive, let us move forward. Uh, John and Bill have chosen silence, I do not wish to put you on the spot. Wish to participate in saying, gains your mind, there is an indicator that might change your mind?
My, my, my concern is that we're gonna go ahead and say, okay, and then we're gonna get the new firehouse and incorporate it, and at that point, you're gonna need two new trucks. How do we pay for them?
That's a good, that's a good question. Um, but this is, this is, these are questions that every town has to go through. And we're no different, we had a plan, we had a five year plan that I screwed up by trying to go for a grant. And I, I don't regret that, and I think we will continue to try for grants. But I also wanna suggest that we don't know right now, we're not, you guys are moving forward, I would suggest that we modify that, that motion to a motion to allow for me and maybe me and Bud to look into how we're going to fund it. Give us the authorization to, to come back to you and say, cause I don't know how we're gonna fund it right now, I could go to, I'm sure I could call Diane back and they would fund it. But I also would like to, to try some other funding opportunities.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to see that before, before moving forward is how, you know, the funding and what the, exactly what the term is and what the, you know, payment structure would be. I also think the idea about the consultant is really a, a great, great idea, in all honesty, to do
It is.
Sort of a holistic, I think there's this Jim Lyon's Fire Consultants right in Connecticut. Seems like he's got a lot of experience in that, I was just looking for.
Will you email me that?
I can, yeah, I'll send that to you. But they do, um, fire apparatus specification, design, quality assurance, consulting services and evaluations.
And that might address Bill's concern about, you know, maybe two trucks later, maybe it's.
Right, right, yeah, just to make sure, if we're, if we're gonna spend, you know, five, six hundred thousand dollars on a vehicle, I think we wanna make sure it's the right vehicle.
Yeah.
So what I'm gonna suggest is that we, whatever, whatever vote you guys make tonight, I would like to come back next month with the, with the funding information that I'm able to determine and, and move forward from that, I'd like very much to tell the fire department that we're going to be moving forward with this, we're just trying to figure out how to fund it.
Um, I think that is good, uh, I mean, you might wanna temper your, uh, your, uh, enthusiasm with the fire department, but uh, I think that, does anyone wish to vote officially to give Angus and I the authority to talk to funding, I mean, seems like something we should be able to do without a vote, but.
There is a motion tentatively on the floor, Russ said motion to move forward with the truck, it has not been seconded. Do we wanna let that motion not be seconded to move forward with this, another motion?
This might be a little contradictory. Might be a little.
Russ, do you wanna withdraw your motion?
Uh, I, I don't see where it does any good, cause if there's no second, but yeah.
Well, no, I mean, it just.
You end up in the same spot.
Put it in the minutes appropriately, no gloves on my fingers, so I can actually type still. But I wanna make sure that since there's no seconding before we go on to another motion.
Fine, you can, you can put it anywhere you like.
Okay, thank you.
As Bud said, I'm not sure we need to make a motion to do that, and, and this is something that, uh, maybe I waited a little too long to get in my head that I was gonna come to you tonight, because I, I didn't do any preparation on funding. But I didn't have the time to do that, but by the time I recognized where we were with taxes, I just wanted to get some feedback from you. And as the conversation developed, I recognized that we still do have to figure out how we're gonna fund this.
I think that is progress, if we can continue to have this conversation.
Excellent. I'll make a motion to authorize Angus and Bud to pursue funding for both the truck with the potential of including a building at future time, or wrapping one way or the other, however you wanna wrap it, as well as pursuing hiring consultants, although I'd like to know a fund on that, and then amount on how much a consultant would actually cost.
Your authorization then to do.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I go along with that motion and I would second it, but it's an awful confusing motion, I think.
Pursue funding for truck and building. And then we can do another motion for pursue consulting information.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Okay, you wanna second the funding?
Yes.
Availability, terms and payment structure? Okay, you have a second?
Okay.
Bud, up to you.
Up to me?
Yeah, do you wanna, all those in favor say?
Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor of authorizing Angus and I to proceed to collect information on the funding sources of both fire truck, firehouse and a consultant, please say.
No, consultant's separate.
Oh, separate, oh, I was blending both of them together, okay.
Well, initially I had, but, yeah.
All those in favor of allowing Angus and I, or encouraging Angus, telling Angus and I to go out and seek information on potential funding sources for a fire truck and a building, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all those votes, thank you. Uh, all those in favor of having Angus and I identify potential consultants, and the fire chief, I guess, uh, identify potential consultants that can help us do an assessment of our fire apparatus needs.
Identify fire chief.
Say that again?
Did we lose a fire chief?
No, seems to me that if Angus and I are going to do this, we should have the fire chief involved in the selection as well.
Oh, okay, in, include him, that's fine, I, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Sounds like you, you, you were saying we need a new fire chief.
Angus and I could call, that is exactly right, so, all right, excellent, all those in favor of that, sending Angus, yeah, thank you.
Okay, who seconded that one?
I did. Russell.
Russ, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my keyboard, okay.
Good, all right, all right, we've got lots of things to do, although Angus, I think you went to the big one. Uh, have you chatted, you have, let's say you chatted enough about the grant. Do you feel that you have given everybody enough information, you applied for a grant, and what is intended to do? If accepted, we have to fund with forty-two thousand, forty-two seventy-two thousand dollars.
Seventy-two, now, what is the STEAP grant for?
I will, that's what I was going to ask, if everyone looked at any of the minutes where it was described well, or any of the articles in newspapers where it was described well. If not, if anyone here is, is questioning, has any questions, I will just run through what that is for.
Thumbnail.
And hearing, hearing, hearing the, the same crickets that were here before, I will, I will give you the description. But before I do, I just received a text message from Rich Balducci, who says that Carmella is in the hospital in Newport right now. It's not something that is so serious that she will not, she's, she's okay, she's just there in the hospital and she will be here on. Next.
Thanks to God, I hope she feels better.
That's what I texted him back.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so, um, all right, the STEAP grant was for a number of things, we, we named it, actually the project, we named it eGovernment. We revised that to open government, which I don't like as much, but it is great, basically to try and utilize, to, to utilize technology for, uh, that is available now, that, that will make it accessibility to the town hall easier for the public without having to come into the town hall. And the reason that we decided to go forward with that is because this grant was, was a grant that was put together by the state and in, in the past, if you, if you remember, we've used it for sidewalks, very successful, we used it for the industrial park, very successful. But the state discontinued the program. This year, they opened it up again with the caveat that these, um, these grants should be spent on something that is related to COVID and, and the after effects of COVID. We thought, uh, very, uh, very much thought that, that first and foremost, we, we should get some audio visual equipment upstairs in the auditorium so that during COVID and then even subsequent to COVID, that, uh, we will have the capability to have in-person meetings that are also broadcast over technology like Zoom, if not Zoom itself, so that, um, people that may not be able to come to the meeting will be able to participate. I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate ever being able to vote remotely, but you never know. Right now, though, I've noticed a huge increase in participation in our selectmen's meetings. Not so much here, but we have had people here that don't normally come to these meetings, and I've seen that on, on almost all of our commissions. So I think that, uh, opening up the ability to participate in meetings, in public meetings is important, so that was one of the things that started, that really started the ball rolling. From there, we went to, um, technology that will allow for, um, remote, uh, remote access to building and land use permitting, so doing all of that remotely. Any kind of applications like that, fire marshal applications and things like that will be available remotely. The GIS system that has been requested by our assessor, our land use department and our town clerk for, for at least five years, uh, is part of this program. New computers for the, the town hall that will be, all of the computers in town, I think we have three out of, out of seventeen computers that are newer than three years old, um, and we need to start talking about replacing them. Those are.
As I type on a computer that was made in, in two thousand nine.
Well. I drive a car that was built in nineteen seventy, but that's.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And we have a fire truck that's thirty-five years old.
Bingo.
But.
And I'm using my wife's phone, so don't start.
Computers, the computer systems, computer systems in the town hall, we need to, we need to replace them, I would like very much to, to take the advantage, take advantage of this opportunity and use this money to do that. If we don't, we are going to have to start a program similar to the fire truck program and start replacing these on a scheduled basis, because, you know, we just went through, um, the Windows ten, I think it was, I don't, I don't know enough about computers, I'll tell you, but Windows stopped supporting one of their programs, and, and we had to upgrade all of the computers in town to, to be able to, um, to continue without that Windows ten. The last thing, and that actually is the most expensive part of this program, is, is replacing the computer system. The, uh, the last thing on the list is three electronic signs around town. One to replace the hand lettered sign over at Debit's Field. The other is to install another, uh, electronic sign at the firehouse, at, at the intersection of Union and, and West Elm. And the third is in front of the elementary school. Those, the two, the two bigger signs over at Debit's and the firehouse will be operated from here at the town hall. The, uh, the sign at the elementary school will be operated by the elementary school, but we will have access to being able to get town messages on there if we need to. Really, um, really the effort is to open up to the community electronic new technologies that, that can get messages out faster and, and make it easier for people to utilize the town hall without having to come into the town hall. All of this can be done, um, reasonably quickly, and I anticipate we will hear back. I think they just extended it, so it's probably gonna be the middle of October before we hear whether the grant was actually granted. But when the state, I, I believe we're going to get the award of the grant, because when the state put this back together again, they simply took the total amount of money that they had and divided it by one hundred and sixty-nine and said, you have an opportunity to utilize a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of, of money. So every town has the opportunity for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to put this together. Our grant is for a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And I believe, I, I don't have the final numbers on yet what the match of that is, it's not a one hundred percent match, it's not a fifty percent match. But, uh, rough numbers, the town will have to put up seventy thousand, so this will be roughly a hundred and ninety-five million.
So the state, the state gives us a hundred and nineteen, the town has to commit seventy-something, go about a hundred and ninety.
Yeah.
All right, got it, okay, that's a lot of.
But that's, you know, let's wait and see, we see whether we get the grant.
All right. Now, so.
Seventy, not seventy-two thousand?
I, I don't know what the number is, I might have said seventy-two at the earlier meeting.
Okay.
I don't have a.
I'm gonna put approximate then.
Definitive number on it yet, because it hasn't been determined, we, we, actually, we still don't know. We have two or three different proposals for each of these, um, each of these, uh, components, and we certainly, uh, asked for the most that we could, so we get this grant, we'll, we'll start to really look at how we're gonna fund it and how, who we're gonna go with.
Now, the towns match seventy thousand, seventy-two thousand will require us to do something. Will require us to do, and I do not know what the current world says, whether we, the Board of Finance, will be required to make that commitment, or hopefully we can take it to the town. That would be my hope, seems to me the town should participate in something as large.
We are gonna work as hard as we can to have public meetings, um, actually, I don't wanna sidetrack this conversation, but the selectmen's meeting, we talked about the fact that we're gonna open up the, the town hall upstairs, is set up right now for, uh, for commissions to come in and meet. They still have to offer Zoom, uh, Zoom remote connection capability, uh, but, um, for right now, we can safely meet up in the town hall and have, have audiences if, uh, up to a certain amount, but we, we do still have to offer, um, Zoom or remote access. So, yes, we, we do have to go to a town meeting, we are planning a town meeting, as we talked about earlier, and sometime in the next week or so, uh, whatever the scheduling will allow us to. That will be an outdoor town meeting.
That's, I was about to say, the uncertainty of the attendance of the town meeting means you cannot do, not plan to have it upstairs, correct? You have to have it in a bigger.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, it's getting cold out there, so we, we, people will have to come well. Okay. It's getting cold out there, so we, we, people will have to come well bundled. Uh, so.
It's gonna warm up, man. It's gonna be eighty degrees tomorrow.
Oh, really? All right, let's get a town meeting in. Therefore, following Angus's last thought, uh, it is my suggestion that we anticipate that we will be together next month upstairs in town hall. Unless anyone is, continues to be concerned about, uh, joining together. Which if you are, we could bring you in by Zoom. We hope we do it now.
It's up to each commission. You guys decide for yourselves. I'm not, I'm not, um, requiring anybody to come into the building, or certainly not to gather in the building. But the room is, um, we've had the health department look at it and, uh, it's set up so that we can do so safely.
Okay, can we get enough internet connection up there so that, you know, I can have my tablet at the table with me so I can watch muted, but watch what's going on? So if, for instance, okay, Carmella's at home recovering, hopefully, and she can't come, but she can still zoom in.
Yep.
So that she can still vote. Can, is there enough internet up there?
Yes, there is. We, we upgraded the, uh, the Wi-Fi in the building, um, two years ago, a year ago, so.
Right, but I know, well, the last time we were there, which was a few days ago, um, we, you know, a couple months ago, we couldn't quite get the other end of the table, um, to bring in internet, but.
I'm not certain, I'm not certain if that was Wi-Fi or what, what the reasoning for that was, but.
Yeah, Wi-Fi is what I'd be getting on.
Yeah.
With my tablet.
As far as I know, it is. I mean, we've got, we're certainly going to experiment with it.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, that we can have seven computers around a table and not get a tremendous amount of feedback with the Zoom stuff. I, I think we need to have one computer. And I don't know yet. I'm not, you know, we're trying to figure this out. We need to have one computer with the volume and camera and the rest of the folks will be, uh.
Yeah, totally new. Yeah.
Very good.
If on at all. I'm not sure you need to. If, if this, if this commission has all but one person at it, I've been to numerous meetings around the state where, um, there is a Zoom, there's Zoom connection, but it's only got one computer. Everybody didn't have their computer on. One person had a computer and people communicated through that one computer.
You can get things that plug in that give you a wide-angle look at the room too.
Yep, yeah.
Right, but I also know, like, right now, I'm in and out of my, my email so that I can pull up Bud's memo, so I can pull up the budget from last month, or the budget that was just sent to us.
Right. Well, I would suggest that that would be something that maybe we can experiment with, but I would suggest with this, that it would be your computer that's running the, uh, running the show.
I guess I'm getting a new computer. It probably wouldn't handle it, so.
It's a nineteen seventies computer. I, I don't know, like I said, but you could have your computer there but not be on the, uh, not be on the Zoom call, except Bud running the meeting with his computer. And then you're, uh, you're, you've got access, but you don't need to be videotaped on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out, so.
All right, we received the financials, what, yesterday, last night? Does anyone?
Do we want to move on this first?
Go there. Have we completed this seventy-two thousand? This is a lot of money. I wanna make sure that we.
Well, uh, we, we, I had thought we had to believe, because it is informational at the moment. We've applied for the grant. We have no action to take until that grant is approved. Unless you.
Once it's approved, are we beholden to spend that money?
Yeah, um, there is a leanings, but you still have, as the Board of Finance, you still have full discretion to make that decision, send it to a town meeting. You are not committed to it at the moment. Is that your question, or are you concerned?
Exactly the question. That, that's, that's a lot of money, honey, as they say.
That is a lot of money. That is correct. That's correct. Anyone else have concerns on the grant? Uh, does anyone wish to sigh or anything like that?
No, except I hate electronic signs in a town. There's no fa, there's no faster way to ruin a small town. And start putting all kinds of electronic signs in and let you know what's going on. That's just my personal opinion.
No, I, I, I resisted for a long time. There's new technology out, those signs don't look like these flashing red signs when you drive into Old Say.
That, that sign drives me nuts.
Yep, me too. I can't imagine putting that, the sign that they put in front of the Cape, that beautiful building, and they put that sign there. But these signs are, they're, they're much more subtle. They look, you can make these signs look almost like, um, like the hand-lettered signs.
Wow, wow.
I'll, I'll also tell you what drives me nuts is having, watching Jonathan stand there in his shorts in the middle of the winter with boots on and inches of snow. I feel bad for him. I feel bad for him.
And I've had to chase the cover of the letter machine, pick it up off the road and put it back on the.
No, it is time, it's time to do this, and the technology has gotten to a point where I, I share your concern, Bill, on that. And, uh, and we can make them pretty nice.
Okay.
I think the other things are important to have. I know I've mentioned to you a number of times that my ability to sit in on the selectmen's meeting or, or go to the P and Z meeting from my home, so it's not as disruptive, having to leave the house to be able to attend, is, is great.
Yeah, and you know.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Um, all right, um, Russell, have we, uh, answered your concern? Or at least addressed your concern? Is the, are we finished? Good.
Yes.
We will, it will be back, I think, is, we will have another shot at this conversation, so. Now, again, uh, we received financials late last night. I don't know if anyone got an opportunity to look at them. Angus and I did not get the chance today to discuss them in detail. Does anyone have any questions that, uh, to send Angus and I off to find answers for?
I'm raising my hand.
Okay.
Um, do you wanna go through it as a normal, and I'll bring it up as we go along?
Well, be, before you even get there, uh, did we ever get the end of the year for last fiscal year? Did it go the first two months of this year?
I, we, you have gotten something, but I think I encourage you to dismiss it in July because it was not a good final, so I'm going to suggest you may not have gotten last year's yet. You certainly don't have the audited versions.
Okay, I, I'd like to see where we're at on, on last year before we can look at this year, but we're looking at this year too, I realize.
All right, that is a good question. All right, Angus and I will think about that.
We'll make sure that we get that for you.
Yes.
Get that out. I think we're pretty much wrapped up. I think there are, there are two more projects that are still encumbered. But they're not in any, anything of substance.
Very good. And we, the auditors, we talked to the auditors today. They are asking for this information as well, so we should send you the same version we sent the auditors. Excellent. Good. Questions, Laurie? Are you still thinking?
No, I'm trying to make it larger so I can read it. I'm sorry. Um, the town hall water, I'll just start right in there. Um.
We've spent it all, all four thousand?
Yeah, yeah, water bill is a little bit over, I thought.
It was. We had a, we found a leak. They, it's a problem that I have with, with water bills in general. There was a leak over at the, um, Fire Museum over on High Street, at High and River Street, and that was, uh, it was something like five thousand gallons of water that leaked because they didn't check the thing for three months.
Ooh.
It was a small leak in the toilet. It took me, uh, it took me an hour to find it, but, um, that, that drove quite a bit of that.
Wow.
Um, and, okay. Now, and I'm trying to remember why I wrote this. Question, Thought Assistant to Kathy, why is it saying none? Um.
There is no assistant, yeah.
I thought we had somebody hired that was going to be assisting that position.
We had someone, we had someone that we had hoped was going to be hired, but we did not, yet.
But that has not come through. Okay, um.
We're currently advertising again for that. You'll find the same thing at the Tax Collector's Assistant. It's, it's haven't been hired yet. It, that's not zero, well, that's not zero, because we did have help in here in July, but, there's no one currently in there.
Okay. Um, special services, it's the dog run lease paid all upfront?
Yes.
Okay. There are, P and Z and Inland Wetlands are at one hundred percent. No bills at all have been paid out of them.
How could that be?
I, I'm questioning that personally, but those are at, stocked at one hundred percent. Page three.
Yeah, I've gotta go, I, I've gotta go pick my, pick my sheet up, so give me a second. I'll be right back.
Okay, yeah, I have a sudden enlargement and it's not pretty, um.
P and Z sounds tricky. I mean, we've been talking to these folks that are being paid out of the salary line item, so there should be a payment there, so something is.
I would think, but, you know, enforcement salary is entirely stocked. Part-time clerk is entirely, I mean, they're all at one hundred percent flush with funds, and the same thing for inland wetlands.
Inland wetlands doesn't surprise me. They rarely incur too many costs, but it's P and Z that I, I'm intrigued by as well.
Yeah, okay, and I've gotta get out of that and try and bring that up again because that just, everything got larger, uh, to find it again.
Just like you, I didn't get a chance to really get a good look at these. Um, P and Z, it, it should not have been, there's gotta be a clerical error there.
Yes.
That's what's spent already. Inland Wetlands hasn't had zero spent. I'm not sure what, what you mean by that.
I mean, that Middlesex Soil Conservation, I mean, everything is at one hundred.
That's, that's once, that's once a year. We pay, that's an association.
Okay, you know, but also zone enforcement agent, you know, there's, they're all none, there's no payments out. Okay, so those would be asked to be looked into. I'm presuming.
He built, he doesn't, he does not get paid on a weekly basis. He gets paid.
At the works.
What, three or four times a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
He puts in his time, yes.
Highway Department, I am presuming that that contingency line is COVID-related, and I felt we were putting something in to have COVID-related expenses in one spot.
That is my hope.
Highway and Civil Prep, excuse me.
Is it, is that the, one of the contingencies is virtually drawn completely. Is that the highway?
Well, Civil Prep is, is over by five hundred.
Contingency storms, that, that, um, that is the result of that, uh, the storm that came, uh, the hurricane, not hurricane.
Oh.
We got all that, that was all.
Very good.
Trees and overtime for the trees, um, no, that's not overtime for the crew, but the equipment that we needed, we had to hire, uh, pre-service to come in. We.
Step closer, Angus.
No. You don't want me to be closer.
I can't hear you.
I will try to.
This is my good ear and I can't hear you.
Try to speak clearer, but you do not want me any closer. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that is all driven from this, from the storm, and we are hopeful that that will all be replaced. If in fact, the, uh, we have, the county is able to meet the expenditure that is required for the emergency to be declared and funded by FEMA.
Ah, excellent, excellent. Very good. Okay. It is.
And again, we were lucky on that storm, just like we were lucky on other storms, um, towns around us and towns around the state. That's green. We did pretty well. I know we were out of power for a long time, but I'm very, very proud of our crew and our emergency operations director, for the work that they did to get this done. We were, we were out of power and our roads were closed, not because we weren't ready. We were ready after a day and a half. Um, that was every source, just would not get the wires cleared from the trees so we could benefit from what we needed to do.
Yeah.
I'm shocked.
Okay, um, Park and Rec Gate, is that where funds are being taken from for the Park and Rec COVID expenses?
Take care, yes, yep.
Um, Fire Supplemental Insurance, is that a one-time payment?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the Household Hazardous Waste is down to forty-seven percent?
Yeah.
Uh.
I got, I see it. I just found it. Household Hazardous.
Sorry, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, that's twice a year, sir. That's a twice a year payment. Or actually, it's four, four times a year payment, yeah.
They just had it last weekend, I think.
They just had a what?
They just had it last weekend, I believe. The, the, the traffic was lined up for half a month.
Ah.
And we actually, you know, um, that's something that we budgeted for, but it's just, it, our, our fees are based on how many people are using it, and thus far, we are using it more than we anticipated. So, um, while this is a twice-a-year payment, we do have a, um, there will be some additional. It looks as if, if everyone continues to do what they're supposed to do, we will go over on that.
Okay, Poly Sub, all except one line is over. Their entire department is down to thirty-seven. Poly, political.
Political subdivisions, okay, yeah.
They're pretty much wiped out except for one line.
We virtually pay them in July.
Those are all paid at once, so.
Yeah, we pay them in July, yeah.
Okay, and you're saying our property taxes go on the revenue side, and I haven't looked too closely at that since it was late this afternoon, but we're at forty-seven percent remaining. Um, if the bulk of our payments are for housing, if you will, shouldn't those be, or is that true that it's one half and one half, so that's appropriate?
Actually, it's fairly aggressive if you think about it, half and half, uh, so you pick up some cars and that type of thing. I think it, uh, it's actually a pretty good number.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, and I might be, um, my, my recollection is that, uh, when we were reviewing this a few months ago, um, we, Bud and I, Bud put together a study and, and we generally an- anticipate about fifty-five percent of our taxes are collected before September.
That's good.
And, and that's right where we are.
That is exactly, yes.
Okay. Those are the only ones that I could quickly. Real quick, but.
I guess I would like to thank the people of Deep River for paying their taxes right on the spot. It didn't necessarily have to, but it looks like everybody did, so that's, that's, that surprised me with the citizens of Deep River. Thanks anyway.
It doesn't surprise me at all. I'm, I'm grateful. Very few people actually took advantage of the low interest, um, people paid on time.
Yep.
Which, we're almost due now anyhow, another two weeks.
Another, another, another week.
That's correct. October first.
Yeah, might wanna put the sandwich board out there saying, hey, taxes are due.
Well, yeah, we'll have to get Jonathan up there.
Well, I, I'm not sure taxes are due. Penalty, I'm not sure how to phrase it.
Yeah.
Right, if you don't pay them, the penalty goes back.
We'll work, we'll work on how to, how to word that, but that's a good idea, Laurie.
Correct, so, cool.
Yeah.
All right, folks, any other items that anyone would like to discuss? All right, I think we have made grand progress, and, uh, we will, uh, hopefully return to a new normal next month.
Closer to normal, right?
New normal, whatever, whatever the phraseology is, that is correct, so.
And forever, how long does it can? We just, you know, I don't know. We had the, uh, the Pratt, the Health Director, the Health Department came to our Board of Selectmen's meeting today and updated us. I spent time with them this morning, um, and we do see a slight uptick in Connecticut, as should be expected when, um, schools are back in session and, and, uh, all those sports are happening, all those different things that are happening are happening. But we are still, Connecticut is, is one of the best places in the country, and Middlesex County is one of, is the best place in the state, um, as far as numbers go. We are, we are doing really well, um, but we're, we're still outside a lot. And I, nobody knows really what's gonna happen when we move inside. So the hope is that we can start having these meetings and we'll be able to continue through, throughout this. But, um, keep your computers charged, because we might not.
Keep your hands washed and your hands away from, that's the one I have dealt with, keeping my hands away from my face. Um.
Yeah.
As I'm leaning.
Please scratch it. Uh, all right, folks, uh, could I have a motion to res, uh, to resign? Could I have a motion to adjourn or?
No, 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 you're not coming anywhere.
Got a Freudian slip?
No, 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 just, uh, I'm aging and my, uh, my use of vocabulary is getting more limited all the time.
I make a motion adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Have it a second.
What was that? Thank you.
Y'all set? I'm gonna stop record.
All right, stop recording.